All right, but welcome back, everybody. This is a reconvening, the briefing of the Mason County Commission. We're moving into Historic Preservation Commission interviews. I'm gonna go ahead and start with Christopher Gainer. Mr. Gainer, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, what we've got here is just a simple interview. We're gonna ask you a few questions. There are no right answers. There are no wrong answers. This just gives us an idea of who you are. Uh, we'd ask if you can to make them brief if you can, but if you feel you need to explain further, please do. We will start with these questions. It's the same for everybody. And uh, in the very end, you'll be given an opportunity to ask questions of us. With that being said, Commissioner Shutey, if you don't mind, would you start? And then Commissioner Trask second, and then myself third, we'll go through that way.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Uh, Chris, first off, um, appreciate you joining us this morning and um, we'll go ahead and get started with the questions. Our first one is, what do you see as the function of the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission?
Uh, its purpose is mainly just to promote and um, teach historic preservation. Um, using various programs to help fund the historical projects around the county as well as keep records of historical buildings and such.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, and thanks, Christopher, for applying. This is great. Um, why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
Um, I've always thought history was a very um, important matter culturally. And so, growing up in Shelton primarily, I've always felt there was a lot of history in Shelton. A lot of people just don't see it. Um, a lot of Mason County, especially as a logging uh, area. And so, as a younger person, I would like to help continue to make sure that history is preserved in our county so that generations ahead of us have equal opportunity to learn.
Now, uh, do you have any ideas to help you could, how you can help raise a community awareness uh, for our Mason County history and historic resources?
Well, I would think a big way definitely is uh, during many of the events that we have going on, you know, especially the Forest Festival to just have someone go out and set up an area definitely to teach because there's always people interested in history. They just don't know where to look. Um, as well as possibly getting people in the high school interested to learn um, would be critical because as I said, the younger generations are pretty much the people who are, we're gonna need to carry this forward.
And uh, this board typically meets the second Thursday of each month at 2:00 PM. Will this be an issue for you?
No.
And do you have any conflicts of interest?
Uh, no.
All right, Chris, this is your opportunity. Are there any questions you have of us that would help you to make the decision on whether you want to continue to uh, go after this position?
Uh, not specifically anything that would help me make the decision. I believe my mind is set up, but uh, what exactly are you looking for in this position?
Uh, Luke, you're on. Would you like to take that question for us?
I can, yeah. Thanks for putting me on the spot for once. Um, so I think in terms of Historic Preservation Commissioner, um, open mindedness is really the biggest thing. And open mindedness with the understanding that the commission can pivot to the direction that the various commissioners want to go in. So it really is flexible to the interests and expertise of the commissioners. Um, it's not like we have to do one specific thing in a year. Um, you know, we've got our various programs, but the direction is determined by those commissioners. So having that understanding, being open minded to um, you know, the fact that you could go in the direction that you may want to go in or that some of the other commissioners want to go in um, and try to work as cohesively as possible to achieve all that um, is is really what we'd be looking for.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any comments on that as well?
None for me.
I do not.
So Chris, do you have any other questions for us?
I do not.
We want to thank you for coming in and and talking with us. We'll have further deliberations on this and we'll be getting back to you shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So Luke, uh, stay back on the line for one minute if you don't mind. Uh, how many positions do we have open?
Four.
We have four positions that are open. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so uh, I have two in front of me here. Uh, Elizabeth Ziegler, is she on? I don't see her anywhere. One more time, uh, Elizabeth Ziegler, are you on? We'll come back to her. Uh, let's see, um. Kenzie, are you on at all here?
Good morning, Commissioner. Yes, I am.
Can you reach out and find out where she is?
We have her scheduled for 10:10, so she may pop on.
But that's fine, so we'll go ahead and come back to her.
Okay.
Sorry, I got a tickle in my throat. With that, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna jump ahead to Superior Court. Patty McGuire. Hi Patty.
Good morning, Commissioner. I have two related items. Uh, the first one falls into the category of we've always done it that way. And the second one uh, falls into the category of who knew. Uh, so the first item is uh, we have hired a new court commissioner, Tersa Butler, who has been the commissioner for several years. Um, was elected Superior Court Judge, so we have hired a new commissioner. For years and years, um, I think at least 20, we have had an, a one-year contract with court commissioners. Uh, this apparently dates back to when the position was part-time and the person accepting the position 20-something years ago wanted to ensure that they would get full benefits even though that they were a part-time employee. So there was a contract and ever since, every year uh, the commission has been asked to approve a one-year contract with the commission. Uh, we are apparently the only county in the state that does this, and this is apparently the only county employee that has a contract. Um, and this truly is uh, just, we do this because we've always done it. Uh, we would like to stop doing this. Uh, we have hired a new court commissioner, uh, Jason Kin. Um, and uh, we would like for him to just be a regular county employee that requires the commission to create an FTE in the Superior Court um, for a position that we already have. I mean, this, this doesn't cost a nickel more than it does. Um, and puts this in the category of being sort of a one-off to being a regular employee like any other. Uh, and then, and then the second piece of that is approve the job description, which has gone through um, legal and HR and risk.
So Patty, on that, Commissioners, if you are comfortable, I'd like to hold off for our next week or so, so I can look into this a little deeper myself for the position with the differences and what uh, issues may come up. Uh, so I guess I'm asking for a little time. How do you feel?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, but if you want to revisit it next week.
Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine. Um, I will not be at that meeting, but um, I don't have any questions and or concerns, so we'll leave it that, that comment.
Okay.
For next week.
I just learned, I guess, like from some situational awareness, I guess Patty is the hope to have this kind of resolved before January 1?
Yes.
Okay, so we would have to have it on the agenda for our meeting on the 17th in order to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So the second related item, which falls into the category of who knew uh, is that um, the term of a Superior Court Judge does not end on December 31st, which everybody assumed it did. At least everybody in Mason County assumed it did. It in fact ends uh, or or the new term begins on the second Monday in January. So uh, Judge Goodell did not run for reelection. Uh, he is going to retire and resign on December 31st 2024. So there's going to be a 12-day period where we have two court commissioners. Uh, we've hired Jason Kin, told him he's going to start on uh, January 1st, and then we found out that there's this RCW that puts the term um, to begin on the 13th. Um, Tersa Butler remains a commissioner. This will have a, a minor budgetary impact because we pay 100% of the cost of a commissioner and 50% of the cost of a Superior Court Judge, but it's it's fine, we'll be fine, but uh, we are gonna have this weird situation for 12 days where we have two commissioners, and I just wanted you to know.
Thank you. You have anything else for us, Patty?
That's it.
I'll spend things you knew you didn't know.
Yeah, who knew? Uh, Judge Goodell, we, we were all surprised. It's been more than 20 years apparently since a Superior Court Judge has served uh, until the actual end of their term, and it's still not going to happen because Judge Goodell is retiring on December 31st, so. Uh, but uh, yeah, stuff you learned along the way.
Yeah. All right, any questions for Patty? All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Patty.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
Okay, before we go on, I'm gonna do another call for this person. We'll try again after the next uh, uh, person we have for the briefing. Uh, Elizabeth Ziegler, are you on the line anywhere? Elizabeth Ziegler. Hearing none. We're gonna go ahead and move forward. Uh, Dave, I saw your face. Are you still available there? Good morning, Dave.
I am here. It's good morning, Commissioners. Um, so we have several items for you today. I'll start off with um, you know, I've referred to it in the past about the CONCON, so every two years, the CONCON base document uh, is renewed. So we are at the point where the base document, which is uh, the piece that all of the amendments that actually have funding attached to them, attached to the base document. So what we're looking at right here is just the base document. Um, the, the current amendments will be in effect until this is ratified, and then we'll have new amendments coming in in January that will affect the funding on the base document. So what you have here is, is the consolidated contract um, for this next two-year cycle.
Hey, Commissioner Trask?
No questions. Looks pretty much like it's looked other years. There is a difference.
It's always looked, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I have no problems with them.
Okay, sorry. Commissioner Shutey?
Yeah, all good with me too.
Same here. Uh, you have anything else for us, Dave?
Okay, so moving on, then we have um, Casey is going to talk about the um, uh, EH fees.
Hello, hello, Commissioner. Sorry, took me a while to get stuff turned on. Um, so every year, this time we uh, amend the EH fees based on the Resolution 70-13, which basically provides a format to raise it based on the Olympia uh, July CPIU yearly. So it never exceeds 5%, but anyway, this is the updated version of what the fees are going to be going to. I included the old cost and then the new one also. And it's basically what they do is it's, it's, they take the CPIU and they add it to it, and then they round down to the nearest $5 increment. So it may be five years before something increases, especially a, a smaller fee, but it's still tracked. And so when it does hit that threshold, it, it goes up. Commissioner Shutey?
Uh, no issues with me. Good to move forward.
Commissioner Trask?
None with me either. Good job.
Same here. Thank you, Casey. What you guys got for us?
Okay, so I'll be filling in for Melissa, uh, who is taking some training today. The next item is a fiscal year 25 contract law enforcement co-responder program. And this is a, a program through the treatment sales tax. This is a, just a continuation of what we've been doing the last two years. $180,000 um, to the law enforcement co-responder program. Just a continuation. Nothing new. Any questions?
Commissioner Trask?
No questions.
Commissioner Shutey?
No, no questions. And just a, a quick addition to this. So just a reminder that based on this model, um, this is about 50% of the actual cost of the program to administer. The other half is covered by Medicaid um, through the Thurston Mason BH ASO, and so uh, great value, and I think it's, it's, it's really been helpful to law enforcement in the community and obviously all the people that uh, you know, are, are clients and need the care. So enthusiastically move this forward.
As, as do I.
Okay, right. Next one is also a fiscal year 25 contract as for Northwest Resources Social Opportunity Services Program. Again, that's a treatment sales tax. This is a continuation of what's already in place. And the, the funding source, again, treatment sales tax for $169,003.24.
Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, I think it's great. Glad we can provide this.
Commissioner Shutey?
Yep, supportive as well. Great program.
As am I. Got anything else for us, Dave?
That is it for me.
Commissioner Trask, do you have anything for Dave?
I do not. Thank your staff for all the help that they give people, so.
Kevin, what about you?
Nothing for me. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too.
All right, next up, I'm gonna call for her again. I don't see anything that's, anybody that's joined us, but let's go ahead one more time. Elizabeth Ziegler, are you on the line? Elizabeth Ziegler, are you on? If so, unmute yourself, please. I do not see any. So I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna move to uh, Public Works, Loretta.
Good morning.
Morning.
First up, we have a request for a road vacation, and Lovejoy is online here to share some more details.
Good morning, Lovejoy. What you got for us?
Good morning. I have road vacation number 419. We are requesting that it put on, be put on the meeting for next week. I believe it's the 17th. Requesting that Board of County Commissioners accept the recommendation of the hearing examiner's determination granting the vacation of the right of way as petition subject to the conditions contained in the findings of fact conclusions of law and recommendations of the hearing examiner for road vacation number 419 and subject to Mason County retaining the total width of the right of way through the adjacent Lombard Road as shown in the plat of Pirate's Cove. Do you have any questions?
I'm, I'm good. Commissioner Shutey, are you all right with this?
I am good as well.
Commissioner Trask?
I'm good as well. It looks like everything's in order. Great job.
We will put it on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Commissioners, we're planning our annual um, business meeting, if you will, and throwing in a little lunchtime holiday retreat. Richard has a news release related to that and our transfer stations.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Like to do some reading this for you. It's uh, Mason County Public Works announces the early closure of the Els Hill Transit and Belfair Dropbox solid waste stations on Thursday, December 19th. Last customer, customer will be accepted at 12:30 PM at the Els Hill Transfer Station and at 11:30 at the Belfair Dropbox Station. These closures are to allow for Public Works staff Christmas luncheon and all-hands staff meeting. We kindly ask the public to plan ahead, and we appreciate your understanding and cooperation. Thank you.
Richard, so we don't say anything here about um, Union and Hootsport. Are those closed normally on Thursday? Is that why we're, yeah?
That's right. Yeah, those are normally closed on that day.
Okay, and then we also have some plans for additional notification. Is that correct?
That's correct. We'll do our, our normal. We'll be putting up reader board signs uh, for both stations well ahead of times. Be getting those. These will be the electronic reading boards that will, uh, will kindly hopefully borrow from the roads department.
For a small fee, no. Any questions, Commissioners?
Not for me.
Nope.
No.
We're all good.
Okay. All right, and then um, if I could just share a quick update, Commissioners, we had held an audit committee meeting or attended, excuse me, we didn't hold it. We attended an audit committee meeting to review um, proposed changes to Chapter 2 and Chapter 3 of the Mason County Code relating to um, finances for the utilities. And if I could do a quickie screen share and just share um, what the audit committee members had to say and some things that we'll be bringing forward during the hearing on Tuesday. Would that be all right to do that for a quickie moment?
Please do.
Okay, now if I can find my happy little screen share, which I'm not for some reason. Hmm. Well. There we go. How about the big green Christmas button? Okay. So first up, Commissioners, in Chapter 2, we have, this is where reserves are established for various funds, and there it was silent to reserves for our enterprise, utility enterprise funds. And what we are proposing is to establish a reserve, an operating reserve, which you see here in 130, and then also a capital reserve, which is 140. When we reviewed this with the, with the audit committee members, um, we had conversation around whether a range was appropriate, 15 to 25% is what the other code language is for other funds. We talked about the fact that utility best practices is typically 45 days or a 15%. And um, it was the audit committee's recommendation to go with a 25% reserve, which is a, a 90-day. So that's what the, what we had put forth was a 15 to 25, but wanted to share with you that the audit committee's recommendation was a 25%. The other concern that committee members had was making sure that we weren't setting ourselves up here and that there was some flexibility for commissioners. And so the language uh, says we will strive to establish and maintain this reserve. And in the event that we are not establishing or maintaining this reserve, um, we will prepare and implement a financial improvement plan. So wanted to highlight that for you, Commissioners, and um, see if you have any concerns about whether that language is flexible enough from your perspective. And then finally, in 140, it's a similar situation for establishing a capital reserve. And again, this language is similar to the other um, funds in this chapter.
So Commissioners, from the uh, Audit Committee, the things, reasons for that was to be able to make sure that staff can take care of what they need in the meantime, or we can easily uh, move things around if we need to without being a violation with the state auditor. Uh, I myself, I think this is a, a good uh, mix. And you know, we can still the whole time expect them to establish it and maintain it. And it's only like this so that in case there's a screw-up of some sorts, or we can't come together for meetings or something else, they can still have the fluidity that they need to continue to do business without any issue. Any questions, Commissioners?
Uh, just one question. I mean, so I don't have an issue with the language, but was there consensus on the audit committee that this was the right path forward, or was there any? Any, any issues that were raised there with, with us taking this approach?
Actually, uh, my opinion was this is the approach that they all wanted when it was done. Uh, it was the other approach that they had some issues with, which was a strict guideline on it that we thought, especially for things such as uh, um, Russellwood is a great example. It may not be just as easy as possible unless we're gonna dump a bunch of money in it, and then if something happens, we can't move the money. Uh, this was more set up the verbiage because of one more than it is for all of them.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and then the other item, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Trask, did you have any questions, comments, or anything regarding that?
I don't, is, is this part of the hearing that's on the schedule for the 17th?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, no problem.
All right, and then the other is Chapter 3, Commissioners, and this is a fairly simple um, revision. In this chapter, it, this chapter establishes the, the utility funds. And previously, we had, it was kind of a hodgepodge. So we had Belfair established. We had some language, I believe, about a reserve in Beard's Cove. And so this is just striking um, most of that section. And then just summarizing what funds were established for our utilities. And the recommendation from, excuse me, the Audit Committee was that, put it all together in one section. And then um, the other recommendation was, you can see down here, we spelled out uh, the full length of the, the bars line, and the recommendation was just to keep the bars number. Keep it simple. In the event of future changes.
Commissioner Trask, any questions?
None for me.
Commissioner Shutey?
Uh, none for me either.
And none for me. I was there. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, um, that is it unless you have any other questions about the utility code updates um, or any other items.
Commissioner Shutey, any questions?
Yeah, so Loretta, just any updates on the Bremerton ILA discussion and the draft letters that we were sending out to the tribes that had requested a meeting?
Yes, we were kind of a bit of on a pause. Um, our, our folks up in Bremerton were out last week during Thanksgiving, so we had an opportunity to catch up. And so we will be sending a draft, the, the letters out. We'll make some slight tweaks. Um, Bremerton will also be doing some additional outreach afterwards. And I believe that um, Mark had done some follow-up with our, our tribal partners as well.
Yeah, I could, I could add some clarification to that, Commissioner Shutey. I um, uh, I talked with Ray Peters at the Squawson Tribe on Friday and, and had a good conversation, kinda outlining how we move forward and just explaining and making sure that they understood that the city of Bremerton is the one that actually has the grant from Department of Commerce. Um, Mason County operates Belfair Sewer. So even if we, if it, even if we didn't move forward with the Bremerton project, Mason County is still looking at having to increase our sprayfield capacity up in Belfair. And with that process, we will be reaching out to the tribes um, to include them in the, in the planning of that process and, and what we're gonna have to do. So um, just wanted to make sure that uh, that our local tribes understood that, that uh, there's, there's really two separate independent processes going on here. Uh, and the city of Bremerton should be reaching out to set up those meetings and and Loretta, it sounded like your conversation with Bremerton last week was, was similar to that, that they understood that they needed to do that.
Yep. Yeah, and then, oh, I'm sorry. And then we also have the, the draft revision, the, excuse me, draft revisions to the ILA um, to send back to Bremerton based on our last meeting that we held together. So um, that also needs to occur.
Gotcha.
Commissioner Trask, do you have any questions?
Um, Commissioner Shutey, did you, did you have anything to add to it before I?
Uh, no, it sounds like it is what it is.
Okay, yeah, no, I have no um, no questions. I think, well, you got my pages of questions prior to, so.
Yep.
Yeah, so no questions. No, none other than that.
All right, uh, Loretta, you got anything else for us?
Uh, not at this time, Commissioners.
If you don't mind, uh, not right at the moment, if you can give me an update on the things that we discussed, the different roads and stuff that had come up, but just keep me in the loop so I know what to tell them.
Yep.
All right, uh, then we're gonna go ahead and move forward to uh, Support Services. Mark?
Thank you, Commissioner Netherland. Um, Jennifer?
Thank you, Commissioner Netherland. Um, Jennifer, you wanna talk to him a little bit about our ARPA funds and kind of trying to wrap up the whole?
Yeah.
Program?
Yeah, so we just have three internal county projects that are um hanging out um that we need to transfer over into the general operations um program or project before the end of the year. We have the hundred thousand for the Public Works Beards Cove AC mainline replacement. And I I talked to Public Works this morning about that. Um, and it's not gonna have a contract ready. It's not out to bid yet. Um, so it won't happen before the end of the year. So I'm recommending that we move those funds into the general operations, the hundred thousand. And then if Public Works does it next year, maybe we can move money out of the general fund um separately, not through ARPA um to pay for that if you so choose. Um, so that's the biggest project we have right right now um remaining. And then we have thirty-nine dollars and four cents um on HR recruitment materials that um I talked to Nicole about it this morning and, you know, asked her if there's, you know, can we purchase something for thirty-nine dollars and four cents or close to that, a little bit over maybe um to use that money up, but if not, um, we could move those funds over so we don't lose them. And then we have um the HR first aid and CPR materials, the AEDs are included in that. Um, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars and three cents. And we're having trouble getting um the invoices correct, I guess, through Cintas. And so um if we're not able to get that figured out, my recommendation is that we um move those funds into the general operations on December seventeenth. Um, it sounds like Nicole thinks they have it straightened out, but they've only received statements so far and not correct invoices. So they're waiting on um correct invoices to come in for that amount. Um, I guess they had um billed for the incorrect number of AEDs originally, and then they were in the incorrect spots, which um, you know, we have different sales tax amounts. So anyway, it was um just slightly um incorrect, and we, especially using federal funds, want to make sure that the invoicing is correct. So that's the background on on that one. So um commissioners, if you're okay with moving those three projects, if needed, we would do that on December seventeenth.
Good with me.
Yep, good with me. And we can't hear you.
And with me.
Okay, and if something happens where we're able to get those figured out, we'll we'll take those off of the projects that are spent um off of that action. That's all I have for you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. What else you got, Mark?
Thank you. Uh, next item I have for you is we received a letter um with a request to name our building one after William Hunter. Now, there's, it's a, I'm not sure if the commissioners had the opportunity to actually review the letter that we received. Um, but within the letter, there apparently were two Bill Hunters. So one served five terms between nineteen sixty-eight through nineteen ninety-two. These weren't consecutive terms, but there were five total terms served. Um, and then there was another Bill Hunter, the grandfather, that actually was a Mason County Commissioner in the early nineteen hundreds. So the Hunter family is very prominent within Mason County and has done quite a bit of stuff, you know, reading through the materials there. It sounded like they um were very involved in community events and and had a lot to do with uh with the fairgrounds when we used to have a fairgrounds. Um, so this request came in, uh, the request was actually from uh individual named. Sorry. Lost my track here. Um, Mark and Pam. Or I'm gonna, I'm hopefully I get their names correctly. Say that again?
Schlotteroff.
Schlotteroff, thank you. Uh, and so wanted to discuss that and and what the the commissioner's feelings were on um on naming building one or our um commission chambers after William Hunter.
That's the di- district that I'm in, uh, that he served for so many years. One of the, I can tell you, it would serve him, it would be a more of an honor than William O. Hunter Park, which is the one uh in Belfair, that small one that's on the corner, that's what's named after him. So I myself, uh, I think it'd be nice to do him uh that recognition. Uh, Commissioner Shooty, what do you think? You live there, represent him now.
Yeah, I I couldn't agree more. I think uh the letter that uh Mark and Pam submitted, uh, do a great job at outlining the many, many contributions of um Bill and uh, you know, just the family's contributions to Mason County, and I think it's a, it's a deserving recognition of all of those decades of service that uh, you know, even continue now. So um would enthusiastically support this.
Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. When I first read the the letter, it was it it's like, well, yeah, of course, of course, why wouldn't we do this? Oh, yeah, absolutely. They've done so much for our county um for our district, so absolutely.
Just so you know, he's also one of the original movers and shakers that uh made the Farm Bureau what it was for so many years. I just saw him at a Farm Bureau meeting uh a few months ago. It was wonderful to see him. So, Mark, it sounds like you have a direction.
Yeah, thank you. So I will go ahead and move this resolution to the December seventeenth agenda.
Thank you. What else you got?
The resolution is actually in your packet, just to to give you a a sense of, you know, how we do this, we will pass this resolution and then um in the past, Kelly Frazier has has done a really good job of getting some signage uh that we can hang, hang up and hang on the building so that when individuals enter building one, um they would see that it would be the William, it's gonna, the official title will be um, the William, I think in parentheses, B. O. Hunter Administration Building.
William B.?
William Bill O. Hunter. Sorry, I think I did say B. Okay. Uh, next item I have on the agenda for you is uh Diane Zorn and and uh Commissioner Shooty and I uh actually interviewed the individuals that responded to our RFQ uh for the feasibility study on the on the possible purchase of the Mason Lake Campground. Um, very, I I think that it's a testament to how well Diane wrote up this RFQ um in the sense that both companies really touched on uh the specific unique things that we needed help with in order to really assess the the value, not only the value, but also the um the feasibility of of continuing to offer this as a um as a campground property. And so after those interviews, unanimously agreed uh that we would like to move forward with a contract with Barry Dunn. Um, that contract would have to be paid out of the general fund. It is, uh, we we've, we've looked at alternative sources of funding, and we really did not, um, we didn't find anything that that would qualify uh to fund this, uh, the the specific study. As we move forward, I think that there's, there's funds available for purchase and improvements uh to some of our parks, but.
Mark, on that, uh, I'm pretty sure one of the REIT funds is for planning. Isn't this considered planning?
Uh, not with the research that we did, Commissioner. We did, I actually looked specifically at the REIT funds to determine if we could utilize this and um and and I don't know if Diane's on, but maybe Diane could talk to that research a little bit. Maybe not.
Nope, you're on your own.
I'm on my own. So yeah, based on my conversations with Diane and Jennifer Byerly, um, I I, oh, there she is.
No, I'm here. Um, and I'll check with MRSC to make sure REIT one. I know we talked about like we can't with REIT two purchase capital, but I'll check about the planning, because that would be REIT one would be the only possibility besides general fund, and I'll check to make sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if the commissioners approve this, uh, then I would start working with uh Barry Dunn to um enter into a contract and and start the work of of really doing that feasibility study for the Mason Lake Campground.
Commissioners, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I definitely don't want it to. There's so many possibilities out there that I would love to keep it as a park. And so if we can make it work, I would love to head that direction.
Yeah, I I agree. I'm I'm comfortable moving forward with Barry Dunn and just commissioners from sitting through the interviews, uh, Barry Dunn did a, did a great job, as did, as did Freihite. Um, they they both had really strong, compelling um, you know, presentations and um but it it, after reviewing both, Barry Dunn, I think would meet our needs um exceptionally and get us the information that we need in order to be able to make a decision on on uh moving forward. So uh, good job, Mark and Diane, uh, in particular, on putting this out and I think, I think you'll have a good consultant experience with Barry Dunn.
Yeah, I was kind of excited with them. They had a couple of individuals that actually grew up in this area and and uh and as children visited the Mason Lake Campground. So they understand the significance of it. Um, they definitely understand the beauty of it, and so they're excited to to work with on us, with us on it. Um, they also, the the part that I appreciated by these proposals is it wasn't just one company responding to it. So Barry Dunn is the main company, but they actually went and got professionals in the respective areas that we needed. So appraisals, um, compliance, uh, code compliance and ADA compliance. Um, they actually had financial folks in there on their team to 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 look at the um the feasibility of of continuing it as a campground and and would the county be able to cover the costs associated with that? Engineers to kind of determine the capital improvements that are necessary and cost those things out. So I I'm really comfortable with this team, and I'm hopeful that we're gonna get a good product from them. So thank you for letting me move forward, and I will begin discussions with Barry Dunn.
Yeah.
And that's all I had for you, commissioners.
We not have a homeland security program.
Yeah.
Oh, did I skip? I did. I'm sorry. I skipped John. Are you out there, John, or did you run away?
I am. Good morning, commissioners. I had before you a a homeland security grant, which you already approved, but we applied for more funding to help the Sheriff's Department in their mobile command post. So we, our grant initially was fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. They increased it, increased it to twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So I'm just making you aware of that grant and that that money will be going to the Sheriff's Department to assist them in moving forward with their uh mobile command post. Are there any questions?
Mr. Shooty?
Uh, me.
Mr. Trask?
No, that's awesome. Great job.
Yep, ready to go.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Doug, do you guys have anything for Mark?
I don't have anything for Mark.
Yep.
Anything, last words, Mark?
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, uh, Commissioner, discussion and or calendars?
Well, we do have, if you want to discuss the history preservation.
Yes.
Person. So there are four openings. I looked not that I doubted Luke, but I loved my, my curiosity. And so um, I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, I thought he was a great candidate. I'm good with just putting him on. Are you?
I am, I am. I thought he was, he knew what he was talking about, and it's neat to have somebody that's interested in history. We have, we have a lot of history in Mason County. So, yeah, I think he'd be a good fit.
Are you the same, Commissioner Shooty?
I am supportive as well. Yep.
And I should actually just ask, I don't see her on there. Elizabeth Ziegler, are you on? If you are, please unmute yourself and say hello. Elizabeth Ziegler. Hope I hear none. Uh, so I have a calendar question. I have a, I've not been a part of this, but I don't know if it's because uh uh Kevin is moving on or what, but I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow uh for uh Local Homeless Housing Plan. I want to make sure I'm not stepping on anybody. It's in my phone, so, and I have, this is a uh launch meeting.
Well, what what time is it?
Looks like eleven AM to twelve thirty.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I'm involved in that. So I have, I have Housing Behavioral Health Advisor. Do you think this is tomorrow?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no. Yeah, the only thing I have is Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board on the eleventh, but I think those are two separate things, so.
And I'll show. I got no problem with it. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't stepping on somebody. Uh, Sharon, are you okay with that? Do you have anything to do with this, or?
No idea what what it is even.
He's right.
So, nope.
But it's on my calendar and it popped up, so I'm good. Uh, Mark, you seem to have, no, actually, it was Dave that spoke back with him and said, uh, this is the proper list. So with that, I'll go ahead and attend that. Do we have anything else to come before us, guys?
Uh, not calendar related, but I do have a letter of support request.
Oh, what you got?
Uh, from MaceCom and the fire districts, uh, they're gonna pursue a FEMA grant to uh obtain, I think, about two hundred new portable radios. And so um, if the commission is supportive of that, uh, I will get a letter to McKenzie this week. Take a look at it on Monday, and we can uh hopefully adopt it on the seventeenth. Uh, the application is due on the twentieth, so a little bit of a tight turnaround, but uh fairly straightforward. There is consensus from the fire districts to do a regional application on this, so pretty good opportunity.
I don't see any conflict with anything we're doing either, do you?
Uh, no.
Then I'm, I'll be supportive.
I think that's great. Yeah, so add my name to it or not, but because I won't be here to vote on it, but I absolutely think it's a great idea and it, it's a grant. Why not?
Yeah, so this is the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, and um districts in Mason County have been successful obtaining funding from this in the past, and so um, the chiefs were meeting again this morning and uh finalizing some of it. I think we'll have most, if not all, fire districts participate in it and um just a good opportunity to get some modern equipment out into the community.
I like it. You got anything else?
Up for me.
All right, then I will entertain a motion.
Well, well, right, one quick thing. Um, thank you, Loretta. She actually sent me a quick little link to the MRSC document on allowable uses of REIT funds. Um, Diana's correct, of course, she's always right, but uh the, so the guidance that's provided by MRSC is that yes, you can use it for planning if it's specific to something that's gonna happen at the park. So you own a park, you're planning of making improvements to it, engineering and design associated with with actually making those improvements. That is all allowable, but a study that may or may not lead to an actual purchase is not eligible.
Okay. Well, it works for me. I just remember reading that it was allowed for planning, so that's considered part of planning, then that's.
Yep, they they specifically define planning within this, within this article, and I'd be happy to send it to.
No, I'm I'm good. I just, like I said, I just go off, that, you know, the memory, I just remember reading it, seeing it, but not exactly what it breaks down into planning, so I'm good.
Actually, yeah, we actually thought the same thing, and we were moving forward, thinking that we could utilize REIT for this. Um, and then when Diane did the research, we identified we couldn't, and just wanted to be clear with the commissioners before we move forward with this contract, that it would have to come out of the general fund.
Yep. I think we're all still on board. Nothing has changed, correct? All right, then I will entertain a motion, commissioners.
Fair, I move adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we adjourned, and no objection. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good day.